...of the United States of America. And he is a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll. Please take the roll Heather. Is that what?
Well called. Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Paniek.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Here.
Detective Sergeant Glass.
I'm here.
Deputy Fire Chief Cameron.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Are there any citizens who would like to make comments on agenda-related items tonight? If so, please step to the podium. And please limit your comments to five minutes. Yes. State your name and address, please.
I will. My name is Dave Rockman, I'm at 422 Screw Street in the city. And good evening, mayor, city council staff. I am here to voice my support for the appointment of Josh Glass as police chief and Mark Cameron as the fire chief. It's on the agenda tonight. I've known and worked with these two men for many years, and I know them to both be of impeccable character, moral, high morals, and a commitment to this community. Well-trained and experienced, these guys are residents of the city. They have a vested interest in this success. They live here, they're raising their families here, and they're both very active in this community. I could give you a lot of examples of the things that these, both of these men do on a daily basis to bring pride to this community. But I know that they both would be embarrassed if I brought that, they would prefer to remain anonymous. But they both do a lot of things personally of unselfish acts of kindness in this community. When the city interviewed, for those who don't know me, I retired as a police chief after nineteen years when Tim Kozel was appointed. And when the city interviewed the candidate to replace me, we interviewed five. At that time, Tim Kozel was the number-one candidate for the job. And the number-two candidate in that pool was Josh Glass, as recommended, the backup candidate. The other candidates were not ranked as they were not, at that time, felt to be appropriate for the, for the position. I know that both these guys are willing to do the mental and physical commitment to do this job. And I can tell you, having done it for nineteen years, I'm well aware of what the physical and mental commitment to that job is. And I can tell you without reservation that both of these men are up to the task, and I have no hesitation recommending both of those for this job, and I hope you'll point them to I. And thank you very much.
Is there anybody else? Yes, please.
Bob Honkow, 432 Cedar Street, city. I worked for the city for thirty-four years in the police department. I fully support Josh Glass and Mark Cameron for the position of a chief in both departments. My only, my only question is, according to the paper, there's a $36,000 savings. I'd like to know where this savings is going to come from. And like I said before, I fully support Josh and Mark for the positions that the city manager has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move along to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Tonight consent agenda items include approval amendments, cash balance, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion from councilmember Beaton and a second from Martin Paniek. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniek.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of appointment of deputy detective sergeant Josh Glass to police chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to have this aid put over to a work session, please. I need to get a lot of questions that I have in order to some others.
Ask for an attorney opinion. I believe the only thing we could do, have a motion to table, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of that.
There's been, Mr. Grabowski has made a motion to refer this to a work session. And I believe the only thing we could do would be to vote to table it.
I, I would agree, Mayor. I think that the proper motion, if you did not want to hear this matter this evening as it's on the agenda, would be a motion to table.
Is there a motion to table? Do we need a second, Mr. Saylor? I can't remember.
I don't believe you do.
Do we vote on it? We vote on it, right?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to table. Heather, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Mayor Zalinski.
No.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
No.
I didn't hear what he said.
Well, I'm supposed to say yes, I'm sorry.
He said yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniek.
No.
And I have four to three. That motion failed.
Thank you. Starting over again. Consideration of appointment of deputy detective sergeant Josh Glass to the police chief and acting deputy fire chief Mark Cameron to fire chief. With the departure of PSD Kozel, this is an opportunity to move for a public safety director, probably public safety director, and return to the police chief for the public, for the police department and a fire chief for the fire department. I am appointing detective sergeant Josh Glass to the position of police chief and acting deputy fire chief Mark Cameron to the position of fire chief and ask the city council approval for both appointments. At this time, council could take action to approve the appointment of detective sergeant Josh Glass to the position of police chief and acting deputy fire, fire Mark Cameron and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign their employment agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
You all right, Heather?
Who made the motion?
Motion made, made by Martin Paniek.
And second by Shemansky.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Yes. I, I like both of these people. And I, and all I think I really need is, I need to be walked through the entire process of how you came to select both of these people for their positions. And if there were any other officers or firemen in the department who also wanted the position. So I just want to know how you handled it, because this is all a mystery. I mean, I, it wasn't posted that I'm aware of for these two positions. So I think we need to know how you handled it in your management.
Sure. It started when, obviously, when Tim submitted his letter of resignation to take over the job in Ludington. So, you know, we, we sat and talked a number of times about transition and, you know, what would, what we should do. His first recommendation was to appoint detective sergeant Glass as the acting police chief and during his absence, and then secondarily to appoint acting deputy fire chief Cameron to take the reins of the fire department in the interim. So we talked about that, and we had subsequent meetings. And I said, if we wanted to go from a public safety director position to police chief, fire chief, what's your position? First of all, he endorsed that. Secondly, he, he said and endorsed both of those candidates for chiefs on a permanent basis. And we talked about that. And he was quite, you know, confident, obviously, that they could do it. But more importantly, he felt at this time, there was only one candidate in each department that he could recommend for chief. It was that, it was that simple. Mr. Bachman alluded to when we interviewed for his replacement, we had an interview panel of two public safety directors. One was from Muskegon, the other one was South Central, like a part of the state, I can't remember what department, and myself. And we interviewed candidates, and their unanimous choice was Tim. And their second choice, if we needed it, to consider was detective sergeant Glass. I would note that there was another member of the police department that had interviewed at that time that they could not support. They didn't feel that individual was capable of performing the job. So I've built, you know, through the four and a half years here, I've built relationships with these two individuals, as well as other members of the department. I've seen them both work. I've seen how they interact within their department, how they interact within the community. And I'm abundantly satisfied with their qualifications to lead this department or their respective departments forward. They are, they have long, deep ties to this community. They're not going anywheres. And this is a challenge that they readily accept. They're both well-trained and educated in their, in their respective career paths. And I have the utmost confidence in appointing those two to those positions. And again, the public safety director Kozel endorsed, strongly endorsed, both of these individuals for, for chiefs. And in fact, you have that copy of those endorsement letters in your packet. And this is coming from an individual that worked with him on virtually a daily basis, a regular basis. He's, and he has seen much more of all of the members of each department than I have. And I respect his endorsement and his recommendation. So that's how we ended up here. In my opinion, based on my conversations with public safety director Kozel and what I've observed, these are, at this time, these are the only two individuals that I would recommend for the positions. Nobody else in the police department, nobody else in the fire department at this time that I would recommend. Now, that doesn't preclude five, ten years down the road, some of our current members would be able, would be up to a task like this, but they're just not ready right now.
I don't, I don't think the problem is who you've picked for these positions. I think that it's the way that it's presented, because somebody had a bad interview four and a half years ago, they can't be re-interviewed. I think that's, because I think both these guys are great choices, they have vested interests in the community. It's just the way that it's going about. Like, here's our pick, vote, that's it.
Yeah, and, and I respect that. But with that additional, with that other member of the police department, I have not seen anything since the interview that would change my mind about his suitability and capability for assuming the position. And, and quite honestly, you know, if, if I would have interviewed members of our department, I'm firmly of the opinion that this would be the result regardless.
I think that's, would have been the way to go about it, though, just to do an interview process again and then end up where you're at.
Right. And that's fine.
Yeah, it's, it's just a critique on your, on the process, because we want to be as transparent as possible. But the other thing that I, I do always worry about is, anytime somebody leaves a department, it, it's a financial, it's a financial loss. You have new people that you have to, you have to spend time interviewing new people to fill empty spots, get them up to speed with what's going on, et cetera, et cetera. And I just, I want to make sure it's a smooth transition and that both of these gentlemen have the support of the department without any, anything going on underneath.
I believe they do, and I think because they're part of the department, that the transition will be seamless. As opposed to bringing someone in from the outside that has to learn the department, has to learn the city, has to learn the members of the department, and there's a, there's a learning curve. And we've flattened this learning curve by making these appointments. And again, and I would not recommend any person to this council unless I thought they were qualified and capable of doing the job.
Well, I would just like to echo what Jay just said. And that is that I don't have any problems with either one of these being chief in their respective departments. I think they're great choices, and we're lucky to have them. Again, it's about the process.
Okay, understand.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Maybe it's for Mr. Saylor. Mr. Saylor, under the charter, does it not state that the city manager picks these two positions? The person?
I'm, I'm not hearing most of what you're saying.
Under the, under the city charter, do, does the city manager pick these two people without, does he need council approval?
The city manager appoints, but it is subject still to council approval, is my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
It was asked from the floor to explain the, the savings. Could you do that quickly?
Yep. Basically, it was just taking the salary of a public safety director and subtracting the cost of a replacement officer, and then adding in the increases for both of the new positions or their new responsibilities, and came up with that savings of $36,000, almost $500.
And this is overall from both departments?
Right, it's, it's cumulative, yeah, between the two departments.
So we're not going to replace them at all?
We're replacing a police officer.
Right.
And as part of the discussions with the public safety director Kozel before he left, I asked, is there a need to make a replacement in the fire department? He said there wasn't. I asked acting deputy chief Cameron the same question, and he gave the same response. There's not a need to do it, right, you know, at this time.
So they're just going to take on the additional responsibilities?
Right, yeah, yep.
You noted in your, in the attachments that this was a saving for the first year. Has there been any thought to the second year and third year?
Well, I would hope that, that we will maintain a savings, and it's going to be eroded as costs go up from year-to-year raises or cost of benefits or things like that. But it, you know, it's going to take, you know, at $36,000, it's going to take a few years to erode that savings. But, you know, those are, those are costs that we'll have regardless, you know, just on operational costs and employee expenses.
I, I have one more question. With Detective Glass moving up to chief, are we going to replace him?
Yes.
Okay, so we're still, I know you've been interviewing for an officer already, so if we approve this tonight, are you going to start, post this job and then start interviewing for his open position?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to ask one thing. How can we go past, I mean, we have looked forward to the guy. The problem is, for twenty-seven years, we've had public safety. Now all of a sudden, we're just waiting it out by just a manager's approval. Did the council approve that, that, whether the council doesn't have to, can approve the process, or do we want to?
This is a recommendation I'm making to council, is transitioning from that to separate chiefs. I mean, that's part of the discussion here tonight, is that if council is willing to appoint these two individuals as chiefs, then we've moved away from the public safety director.
And we've been there a couple of times in the past, over the years, back to Mr. Honkow, when he was here, he was public safety director.
Yeah.
And then we moved to each department having their own chief or fire chief or police chief. And then we moved back, and we've been back and forth a few times over the years.
And I don't know all of that history.
Yeah.
But, again, in talking with public safety director Kozel, you know, we both felt this was an appropriate time to make, to do this.
Any other discussion?
Well, you know, I, I'd just like, you know, again, as not a, not a subject matter expert in police or fire, as, as a reviewer, I have to go by the recommendations of their supervisors. And I do appreciate, for Bachman, you coming in today to make your recommendation. That, and, you know, again, that was a, a pretty nice recommendation as well from Chief Kozel. I mean, it was clear that he believed that both of his candidates were the best choice, and, and he made that recommendation to you. So I, I think we're heading down the right direction. Again, not sure the benefits or the disadvantage of not having a public safety, I imagine that could, but I, I think what we have and the fact that you're hiring from within sends a good signal, and it's a good morale booster as well, that you're knowing that people on the force have the opportunity to advance. And I imagine there's going to be an advancement for a detective position as well.
Exactly, yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Please make sure that you speak directly into your microphone.
I'm trying. I got my mouth right on it.
All right, councilmember Martin Paniek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
No.
It was a no.
He said no.
A no, okay. All right, motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance 20-06, amending chapter 1060, garbage and rubbish collection and disposal. Recommendations from the ad hoc refuge committee has been approved by city council and are currently being implemented. The city attorney has proposed updates, updated language in chapter 1060 to reflect these changes. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. This ordinance is introduced, if this, this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance 20-06, amending chapter 1060, garbage and rubbish collection and disposal. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Did you get that, Heather?
No, I did not.
Who, Dale?
Mr. Cooper.
Motion by Cooper, seconded by?
Martin Paniek.
Martin Paniek.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniek.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of contracting with Safebelt to administer the city's rental inspection program. Due to an increased workload in their core operations, the Spicer Group has found it difficult to devote the necessary time to the rental inspection program and wish to discontinue this service to the city. Safebelt performs rental inspection services in ten Michigan communities, and they are willing to administer the city's program. At this time, council could take action to approve Safebelt to administer the city rental inspection program. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Grabowski, seconded by Shemansky. Is there any discussion?
Well, I've had some real firsthand experience working with Safebelt. Through the pandemic, I had completely remodeled my kitchen and added a second bathroom to our house, which was traumatic, having that interrupted. Was also very, a very bumpy ride with all these new inspections that had to happen. I guess I, I would feel more comfortable approving something like this if I knew how successful and how they handled rental programs. So that's my comment I'm making.
Right, the, they, as I said, they do inspections in ten other communities in, in the area from large. They do some in the city of Detroit. They do them in smaller communities. Again, as a company, we vetted them when we put out the request for qualifications for inspection services. They're, all the people that, that I talked to spoke highly of them. I've been very pleased with their performance since they've been here. And I think it was just a convenient opportunity to let them expand their work within our community. Their intent is to use the current building official to perform the rental inspections so we'll have continuity in the community, I think is advantageous. So I, I'm comfortable with them.
I'm sorry, I thought he was out on leave.
Well, he is, but he's not out indefinitely. I mean, there's, they're, they're going to have to backfill, but it's going to take a bit for them to get ramped up to take on this. They're going to have to do some onboarding with the Spicer Group. They've, they've already had meetings with the Spicer Group to kind of get a handle of the scope of the program. But yeah, that's their intent, is to use the, the person they hired when he comes back. And in the interim, they'll have to backfill.
Mr. Taylor, the, the fees that are listed here, how are they in relation to the current fees? Is there a significant increase, or are they the same? Can you give me some indication of where? Because I understand from this that this is, these fees are what we're going to be paying them. The city has no other costs associated with this contract other than the fees that they charge.
Correct. The, the, the fees for the registration certificate, initial inspection, reinspection, and missed or broken scheduled inspection are the same and will remain the same. What's new is currently Spicer, or the city does not have any fees for, to enact compliance. And so they've used this fee scale of, for non-compliance situations, and they're recommending that we go with that. Now, you know, we have people here from Safebelt, and they can probably do a little bit better job of explaining how they use this fee schedule for non-compliance to get compliance. So Glenn or Kelly, whichever one, or both?
Thank you, Ken.
So we appreciate the opportunity.
So, we appreciate the opportunity to come up and, and?
Please.
I'm Glenn Lindsey, I'm the Regional Operations Manager for Safe Belt.
Would you please, when you talk, get us close to that microphone as you?
Sure, I'm Glenn Lindsey, I'm the Regional Operations Manager for Safe Belt.
I'm Kelly Lindsey, I'm the Account Manager for Michigan and Ohio, and responsible for sales in Michigan.
So in terms of the additional, or the new fees, those are fees that are associated with enforcement letters or an enforcement process. When a property owner doesn't comply with the ordinance, there's a series of letters that need to be sent out and possibly, and potentially, posting of a unit as unfit for occupancy. So those fees that you have represent a cost to the property owner, not the city, but a cost to the property owner for non-compliance.
And at this time, Spicer Group does not have that type of fee schedule in place. Therefore, in the multiple meetings that we've had with them, have shown us a backlog of non-compliance. They had no next steps. So we're going to work on, on that, and we needed to put something in place for that. Although, in our other communities, as Thad mentioned, we are successful with this, with this type of enforcement process. And that's not what we want to start with, of course. It's just to have something in place for those who, you know, will, will be non-compliant, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, currently, it is my understanding that with the amount of rentals that we have within the city, only a third of them are inspected a year, they're on a rotation basis. Is that the same thing that you're going to do?
Yes, yes. We will be adopting exactly the pace that Spicer had. We'll pick up where they left off, in an exactly the same way. It's divided into three quadrants, and we'll be picking that up on that same schedule. So the property owners won't feel any different. They'll just be some new faces, and there will be, of course, for the non-compliant property owners, a little more stringent guidelines.
If a tenant had a complaint about, maybe the hot water heater wasn't fixed, it broke, maybe, whatever, do you handle that also? How would they make a complaint?
We do. We have a written complaint form that they have to submit, and we will not accept that written complaint unless they can provide proof to us that they've notified the landlord in writing about the issue, because we don't want to get in the middle of a landlord-tenant dispute, and somebody's behind on rent. So we require that when they submit that complaint form to us, they give us a copy of the written notification to the landlord also.
And then what would be your action in that event?
We would then notify the landlord that their rental is not compliant. We'd give them a deadline to bring it into compliance, and if not, then we would start the process to post the home unfit for occupancy for non-compliance.
And the cost of that is at the landlord's expense?
That is correct, yes.
Would the landlord have an opportunity to say, well, you know, it's not true, the hot water heater is working?
He would, and we would do a site visit to verify whether it was working or not.
Would there be a fee for that site visit on a case like that?
If it's a complaint that's filed and it's found to be a valid complaint, there is, I think it's a hundred dollar fee for that, because it does involve a site inspection.
Any other questions?
Checklist for the home being able to be in compliance, is it the same?
Yes, it will be the exact same as that Spicer uses.
Okay, I think it needs to be a little stricter than what Spicer uses on these landlords.
If the city wants us to enforce, what we don't want is to come in and be the big bad, you know, new company in town, but if the city has some other areas that they'd like us to tighten up, all that has to be done is that relayed to us, and we will certainly follow the city's direction.
Can, can you list some of the smaller towns, towns, the size of Manistee that you're currently in, in Michigan?
Sure. So we service the city of Three Rivers, which is down in St. Joseph County. They have approximately 1,300 rentals. We also do the city of New Buffalo, we administer their short-term rental program. We administer the rental program for the city, for the township of Colon, and also the city of Bronson.
Thank you.
Is there a way to get a copy of your checklist of what you go through, so we can see what you're looking at?
Yes, we can provide that.
I have a, sort of a, take this as a suggestion, thinking out of the box here. Our police department has been working on putting together a list of blighted properties throughout the city. I'm sure that some of them are rentals. I'm wondering if you can, you can somehow integrate that into your database of properties that you're looking at, so that you're looking at rentals that are blighted, and you know that they're rentals. So I think a special attention needs to be paid to them, because if we've already identified them from the outside as being blighted, then if you're going to inspect them, then I just think that you should also have a say in how blighted they are and grade it on some way.
Certainly.
I would like to see some cooperation with it, since we are trying to work on what's blighted and what's not within the city.
Sure, we'd be happy to work with the police chief or the police department in, in taking a look at those blighted properties that are registered rentals.
Absolutely.
We do that in other communities as well. Work hand in hand with code enforcement.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more discussion? Heather, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of naming the baseball, baseball field at Reese Park. At the June 9th work session, City Council discussed naming the baseball field at Reese Park in honor of Phil Kleber. Staff was asked to reach out to the Reese family members and get their input on naming the field. Staff was unable to get in, any input from family members. At this time, council could take action to authorize the naming of the baseball field in honor of Phil Kleber, subject to staff approval, and the design and location of the sign. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. No, no, that could be.
Okay, so who, whether to? We have a motion by Councilmember Beaton? A second?
I'll make a second.
A second by Mr. Grabowski. Councilmember Grabowski, is there any discussion?
I have a question. If we are to rename this, is there any kind of, if like the family gets wind of it and they get upset, is there any like legal action that can come back on us?
I had the city attorney review the documents on file, and he doesn't see it as being subject to the reverter clause, so we're good there.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm really excited for Phil Kleber, because he's been with the Saints since 1973, and he's dedicated a large part of the last 47 years to being a player, to being a manager, to actually just taking on the responsibility of making sure that ballpark shines. So I think this is a wonderful thing to do for Phil.
And just to clarify, we're not actually renaming, correct? Because there isn't a name to this ballpark right now. We're creating a name just for the ballpark. Reese Park stays Reese Park, correct?
Exactly.
I spoke with Phil today, and he actually had no idea that we were doing this. He was brought up by someone, because it was in the paper, so he was kind of put off, like, so.
Not to tell any tales, but I had told his wife a couple of weeks ago at a ballgame.
But it was kind of a secret still.
Yeah, she kept a good secret.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies to the Downtown Development Authority, Citizen Council, Harbor Commission, Oil and Gas Investment Board, Parks Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Mayor Orell and manager appointments require a motion, second, and council voted to support. Nomination for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on nominees until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. Gas and Oil Investment Board, there's one vacancy, term ending 6/30/24. This is a Mayor Orell appointment. I would like to appoint Douglas A. Parks, 724 Harbor Drive, term ending 6/30/24. Do I have support?
Support.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Grabowski? Second?
That was a motion by Shemansky.
Shemansky, yes.
And who was the second?
Grabowski.
Thank you.
Yes. If there's nothing other, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Parks Commission, two vacancies, terms ending 6/30/23. Applications must be non-residents, applications may be non-residents, but must own real estate or a business profession, having a licensed business located in the city, or have a child attending school within the city. Again, this is a Mayor Orell appointment. I'd like to appoint Tom Swedenberg, 562 First Street, term ending 6/30/23. Do I have support?
Support.
I'll support you.
Support by Grabowski, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Martin Paniac? Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Just a reminder of the work session, next week we'll be discussing city hall hours of operation, dumpster enclosure enforcement, Labor Fest, Safe Belt Parade, and we'll also be receiving a chamber quarterly economic development update at that time. This is a time for citizens to comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by this mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens here tonight that would like to make comments? Yes, please step to the podium and state your name and address.
Grabowski, Forest Street, Manistee. Just to comment to the new police chief, you're going to get your guys to be a little more friendly. They ride around in those cars like they're robots. I saw three kids up on Sycamore Street the other day wave to them, he wouldn't even acknowledge them, he didn't even look their way. I mean, they got to be more friendly towards the public. They can't just scoot up and down the streets like they got to grudge against everybody. You want to get into the community, you get to feel the people. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Taylor?
Nothing at this time.
Um, DPW, are you there, Jeff?
Yes, I am. I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Sailor?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Cameron?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve this community, and I'll do my best to protect the citizens, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for taking the responsibility. Good to have you aboard. Mr. Glass? Josh?
Yeah, I just take a moment to address council staff. I want to say thank you to council staff for their support. I feel both humbled and excited to serve you both as your new police chief, so thank you.
Engineer?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor. Thank you.
City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Finance?
Yes, Your Honor, I would just like to remind the public that even though city hall is reopened, we still have all of the payment options that are available during the closure, including a drop box, we still accept payments by mail, you can do it online, and we also have an 800 number that you can call. And I would encourage the public, if they're concerned about going out to take advantage of those payment methods, it's just safer for everybody and it's convenient, so I just wanted to remind them of that. The other thing is, if we're going to continue to do these virtual meetings, we're going to try to work out a few bugs, which is, it's apparent that the department heads are having a hard time hearing council. So I'll be working on maybe getting an external mic or something that might help, but I would just encourage council members to make sure they speak right into the microphones. That will help a lot, both for this and also for the recordings. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I've got all the staff. Did I miss anybody? Councilmember Aaron Paniac?
Yeah, so when is that work share program done?
I believe it's scheduled to end the 21st or 23rd of July.
I think it's that Friday, the 25th, I think it is.
Oh, 25th, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's still going pretty well? We're getting everything done?
Yeah, we had a, we had to make some adjustments with DPW. We got a little bit behind. We took the summer help, we have eight of them now, and hopefully we'll get the other three onboard. They're going back up to 40 hours, so we're getting another 80 hours a week out of those eight right now, and then we're focusing in on the DDA and the Riverwalk to catch up there. It just, you know, the priorities didn't get set the way they should be, so we're reacting to them.
Program then?
They, they are the summer help only. They're going to go back to 40 hours a week, from 30 to 40.
But to clarify, the summer help was never on work share.
But they were still on?
They were working reduced hours.
They were still working reduced hours.
Okay.
To, to mimic the work share program we had in place, but they're going to come back to their true 40 hours. We were able to work out that.
Okay, and we're still doing the COVID, like distancing?
Oh, yeah.
Where some people are on and some people are off and all that stuff?
Yeah, what we call the sustainability schedules across the board, and that was by putting them down to 30 hours, that helped a bit, you know, but we got a little bit behind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shemansky?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Jeff, have you checked those tennis courts? I see a lot of cracks in them.
Jeff, did you hear that? Councilmember Grabowski asked about the tennis courts and some, and some cracking that he noticed, and he wanted to know if you had checked them.
Yes, and I let the engineers know that we need to do a thorough inspection before we issue payments to the resurfacing contractor. Some of that is going to be normal. That's only one giant concrete slab. I have no idea how old it is, I'm guessing it's 30, 40, 50 years old. So some of the reflective cracking is expected with the resurfacing that we did, but I did notice that one section, it looked like the patchwork that they put in there popped out, probably from the extreme heat that we've had, so they'll probably need to come back and repair that.
Okay. And the? Thad, if you remember here months ago, I asked you about the police negotiations. You gave me ninety-three thousand, that attorney charge, gave you another forty-four thousand and something else. Then you gave what the police got in their negotiations. Then I sat down and figured out your pay was Coldwell's pay and Ed's pay. I come up with a lot of money that we just dropped in contract. How do we account for losing all this money?
I don't think we lost two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, ninety-three thousand is the forty-four thousand and then you had said in a negotiation at what time of your jobs, you're doing that negotiation.
I remember the ninety-some thousand dollars. I don't know what the forty-four thousand was.
Who gave that to you?
Like I say, if it was months ago, I don't remember. I remember our attorney costs were in the nineties and that forty-some thousand might be the cost of the new contract first year or something like that. I don't remember. But, you know, we were following the direction of council. They had objectives they wanted to achieve. The only way we could achieve it was going through arbitration and those were the associated costs. We have no control of what the arbitrator's gonna rule or how they're going to rule. And I don't know what, I don't know how we make that up. It's just pretty much the cost of doing business to try to meet the priorities set by council.
Well, you said it was down to the police got on the arbitration award and then when we were talking here, you mentioned that, and I asked what it would happen to the contract. You said it just dropped. So, that the police department got their penny and all that. I think that's a lot of money.
Without a doubt. You know, it's a lot of money to spend on arbitration and not getting the ruling that we expected we were gonna get. But that was the only option we had if we wanted to pursue what council told us to do.
I understand that. But the thing is, when I asked you, you took and kind of said you'd known for a couple of months, then all of a sudden you said you dropped it. I was just concerned about all this money.
I just, I don't remember, I don't know what you mean, but I just dropped it.
That you used that, I mean, I'm thinking I heard.
Oh, that I forgot to get you the information. Yeah, and that could have been. Right.
Anything else, Mr. Grabowski? Pacifica?
I don't have anything. Congratulations to Josh and Mark.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have a final signed contract with the DPW? Did that ever?
No, that's not done. We gave them, I mean, that's one of the victims of this pandemic. We did provide them with a draft last week and I heard from their business agent, she would like to meet, do a virtual meeting next week if possible to go over it. It's just a matter of trying, finding the, not only the time and the connections, working remotely to get it done. But they did get one. They had Taylor in the last week. They got the draft and they've reviewed it and now want to meet and talk about it.
Okay. Is that substantially different than the first, before the pandemic?
No, no. It was just what, we left it as, as we had talked just in generalities about what we would like to do, both parties. We had to then develop the language, have some conversations with the labor attorney to make sure the way it's, it was written was correct, and then put it in a draft form, do our internal review, and then kick it out to the steel workers.
Okay. When does that become effective?
Well, the current, their agreement expired June thirtieth and I've already agreed to extend the existing agreement until we have the new one in place. So, they're not without an agreement. They still have an agreement to work under.
Okay. I'm just trying to see if there's any gaps in that.
No, there isn't. There's no gaps. They're not gonna lose any coverage. They're not gonna lose any provisions of the contract. It's just, we agreed to extend it. All the conditions of the agreement that was set to expire, we just continue those until we get the new successor agreement signed.
When the new successor agreement is signed, is it gonna have effect, is it gonna be backdated to, I don't know, is it gonna be backdated at all?
I think probably, we haven't really talked about that. I mean, we could make it effective. We'll make it effective July first of this year.
Okay.
We'll have a, we'll have a signing date that will differ from that. But it would, it would be seamless in that regard.
Okay. So, if there's any slight monetary difference, you would make it up?
Yep. I've already agreed that we would pay retroactive pay.
Right.
Because it was nobody's fault that this pandemic complicated things. So, I think that's the fair thing to do.
I think that's right, too.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to know. I want to congratulate Detective, now Police Chief Glass in his new position. And I want to especially congratulate Cameron as Fire Chief. We've got some, I think they're great people to run those two departments. I don't anticipate any problems. And I'm sorry for all the questions that I asked, but I, I felt I needed to do a little bit of due diligence on this as far as the process goes. Not disappointed in the outcome at all. I just needed to understand the thought process that went behind it. And I think it really helped to have Dave Bachman come forward and say something. Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. I want to congratulate Fire Chief Cameron and Police Chief Glass. Welcome aboard. I've heard nothing but good things. I actually received some emails that didn't quite threaten my life, but told me that both of you should be appointed. So, that's good news. My next question is to council. Do you want to continue with in-person meetings or are you, we could do virtual meetings until the end of the month. Is there any opinion on that?
I like in-person.
I think this was behind the way we did it tonight. I have no objections.
I would prefer the in-person ones.
I also prefer the in-person one. But I do have concerns, which I will share. The new CDC guidelines that I read today talk about coronavirus hanging in the air for up to three to four hours. How good is our air exchanging system in this building? I also noticed that we went from eleven to the other day thirty-one. Now, we're thirty-seven cases in Manistee and I expect that to increase along with everybody else. Go ahead.
I was twenty-two.
No, it was thirty-seven because I checked just before I came here.
Really?
From Munson, on the Munson website. It doesn't, it doesn't equate always with what the state reports.
Oh, okay.
So, we're up to thirty-seven. I'm just going over some facts and some things that that I found that I don't really understand. I think these requirements and change, they change daily, what to do. It's kind of, I don't know. I just feel that maybe we need to really look at it and wear masks, protect others. And just by doing that, we care, we're showing we care for each other. I was concerned as I drove around and I saw large groups of people together without masks. I understand. But I don't understand. I think one of the reasons why that we are not in a position that some other areas are is because we practiced social distancing early on and we went to virtual meetings early on. We've done a lot of things early on. So, I guess we need to keep it in our mind. If, if it keeps increasing and we keep having problems, maybe we need to relook at this and decide to, to change and let's be flexible. I would not want to see our stores or our businesses have to close down again. Today on the governor's speech, she addressed that. She will not move forward with reopening if the numbers don't start to go down. Today, there were four hundred and fifty-four new cases in Michigan. Fortunately, we've not had a lot of deaths, pretty much with zero deaths. That's a good sign. Anyway, just my opinion. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Adjourn.